I'm Amanda Fancy, I'm the dealer-owner of Gals Home Hardware and Furniture. We've been at this location for about a year. We started in 1848, way back when. This is our fifth location, so we've never have left the town limits. So we're looking to build this location, you know, we had lots of opportunity to potentially look at, you know, outside of the town limits, but it was really key for us to be and continue to be a growing business in Bridgewater. Bridgewater, Nova Scotia is unique. We have a beautiful countryside. Our town is 7,500 people, but then, you know, our customer reach is about 45,000. So, you know, we're talking about lots of small communities, you know, hidden treasures. There's huge opportunity here, and I think that it's certainly worthwhile to make the visit, make the call, do some inquiry in this, because it certainly is somewhere where I think there'd be some, you know, strong investment opportunities, for sure.
Well, my name is Joey Richard. I come from Quebec, Montreal. I've studied opera, the Montreal Conservatory of Music, so this is where I've learned about Italian, the language, and the food. And my passion just became bigger and bigger for food. I've been cooking for 20 years, almost. I opened a family business, but the only thing I forgot is that my family is still in Montreal, so I'm like, you know, I'm trying, I make new friends, I, I'm building this thing, but it is a family business here. My chef is like my brother, his wife is like my sister, so, I mean, I recreated a family environment. We do the real recipes, starting from the real ingredients. And for Italian food, what the secret is, few ingredients and very fresh. So each recipe would be like three, four ingredients maximum, but I mean, it's just the best ingredients and makes it so delicious. If you think that it's impossible to have your own business, I'm the living proof that it is possible. People want us to thrive. We work together. So everybody helps each other. If you want to be part of a community, it is the community to be part of.
My name is Joel Holland. I'm the owner and operator of Nano2 Athletics. I found the opportunity, started this gym in my parents' garage, and now we are currently in an 8,600 square foot facility. A lot of people come here because of the community. The things that we offer here are different than a normal gym. It's an open atmosphere where you come in, the music's played over the loudspeakers, not in your ears, you don't put earbuds in, and just walk around from one machine to the other. You focus on yourself, but at the same time, you get to meet new people. We have three floors, which we do CrossFit, bootcamps, athletic training, and personal training. We have so many other businesses that are growing our economy and feeding into it becoming more populated, a place where people actually stay as opposed to leave. We're growing. We're getting bigger, and a lot of people are on the same push to become a better Bridgewater. I love this place. It's my home, and there is no other place that I want, would want my business to be.
I'm Amanda Fancy, I'm the dealer-owner of Gals Home Hardware and Furniture. We've been at this location for about a year. We started in 1848, way back when. This is our fifth location, so, you know, we've never have left the town limits. So we're looking to build this location, you know, we had lots of opportunity to potentially look at, you know, outside of the town limits, but it was really key for us to be and continue to be a growing business in Bridgewater. Bridgewater, Nova Scotia is unique. We have a beautiful countryside. Our town is 7,500 people, but then, you know, our customer reach is about 45,000. So, you know, we're talking about lots of small communities, you know, hidden treasures. There's huge opportunity here, and I think that it's certainly worthwhile to make the visit, make the call, do some inquiry in this, because it certainly is somewhere where I think there'd be some, you know, strong investment opportunities, for sure.
Well, my name is Joey Richard. I come from Quebec, Montreal. I've studied opera, the Montreal Conservatory of Music, so this is where I've learned about Italian, the language, and the food. And my passion just became bigger and bigger for food. I've been cooking for 20 years, almost. I opened a family business, but the only thing I forgot is that my, my family is still in Montreal, so I'm like, you know, I'm trying, I make new friends, I, I'm building this thing, but it is a family business here. My chef is like my brother, his wife is like my sister, so, I mean, I recreated a family environment. We do the real recipes, starting from the real ingredients. And for Italian food, what the secret is, few ingredients and very fresh. So each recipe would be like three, four ingredients maximum, but I mean, it's just the best ingredients and makes it so delicious. If you think that it's impossible to have your own business, I'm the living proof that it is possible. People want us to thrive. We work together. So everybody helps each other. If you want to be part of a community, it is the community to be part of.
My name is Joel Holland. I'm the owner and operator of Nano2 Athletics. I found the opportunity, started this gym in my parents' garage, and now we are currently in an 8,600 square foot facility. A lot of people come here because of the community. The things that we offer here are different than a normal gym. It's an open atmosphere where you come in, the music's played over the loudspeakers, not in your ears, you don't put earbuds in, and just walk around from one machine to the other. You focus on yourself, but at the same time, you get to meet new people. We have three floors, which we do CrossFit, bootcamps, athletic training, and personal training. We have so many other businesses that are growing our economy and feeding into it becoming more populated, a place where people actually stay as opposed to leave. We're growing. We're getting bigger, and a lot of people are on the same push to become a better Bridgewater. I love this place. It's my home, and there is no other place that I want, would want my business to be.
Good evening, everyone. We will call this regularly scheduled meeting in Bridgewater Town Council to order. And as always, the town of Bridgewater is located in Mi'kmaqie, which is the unceded ancestral territory of the Mi'kmaq people, and we are privileged to be here. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda circulated? Councillor Caldwell, seconded by Councillor McDonald. All those in favor. Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. We will go right down to announcements. I've got a couple off the top. The first is a proclamation that will be posted on the town's website for February 13th, which is going to be Wear Red Canada Day. And so that is to talk about women's health, cardiovascular health. And so there will be a, as part of the Canadian Women's Heart Health Alliance. So that is February 13th, which hopefully everyone knows why that date is also important to the town, so we'll circle back to that one in a second. The other is that February is African Heritage Month, and so the African Nova Scotian flag will be raised at the community flagpole at Shipyard's Landing, and then there'll be activities throughout the province in recognition of African Heritage Month. Are there any other announcements? Councillor Durbin?
I'm back on Desperay Museum, so I'll have some announcements probably monthly. It is open Tuesday to Saturday, 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. Three important things this month is the 17th Annual CD Saturday, and that's February 11th from 10:00 to 4:00. Event includes guest speaker, local vendors, hot lunch, and a chance to buy and sell and trade. Entry is an unperishable food item or a cash donation that will go to the Interchurch Food Bank. And on February the 1st to April the 29th, they have a photo club's latest corridor exhibits Linda Hall's Burns of Nova Scotia presents Nova Scotia rich history of farming through the photographs of numerous old farmsteads and barns. There again, that's February the 1st to the 29th. And Sue Hutchins explores a world international camera movement. This technique creates images that are pleasing to look at but intentionally ambiguous, thus leaving room for the viewer's own interpretation. That show runs from February the 1st to April the 29th, 2023. And that's it for this month.
Hey, great, thank you. I mentioned that the town's birthday is February, I don't know, Patrick, are you, do you want to share some of the events that we have going on in February? Sorry to put you on the spot.
No.
But we've got lots going on.
Yeah, so specifically your worship around the town's birthday, we are the Saturday before and the Saturday after going to be hosting a Frost Fair in downtown Bridgewater on King Street. So we've got about 15 vendors that are going to be set up as part of a vendor's market at the lots on King Street, so right at the head of Old Bridge and King. We're going to have live music, it's going to run from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Each of those Saturdays, so the 11th and the 18th. So we encourage everyone to come on down and explore the vendors that are there, but also while you're there, park your car, get out, walk around, and enjoy everything downtown. Get out and support our local business community. And we've also got a number of events going on throughout Bridgewater, throughout the entire month of February, which we are branding as Bridgewater Winterlude. So you can visit bridgewater.ca/winterlude for more information on that, including an interactive map if you want to get a feel for what's going on.
Great, thank you. Any other announcements? Before we move on, I just want to thank everyone who helped organize the event that happened at the LCLC on Saturday, the fun day. I wandered down around 3 o'clock, and by then they had, already had 1,500 people through the door. I've never seen the pool so busy. Everyone was having a good time, lots of laughter and hearing children running around, and lots of positive feedback from the community. But it was just, it was so great to see a free event, you know, in the middle of what is supposed to be winter. But it was a great day, and it was just, to see the place packed was fantastic. So looking forward to more events like that at the facility. So if there's nothing else, our next section is delegations. I don't know if there's any members of the public here that wish to address council on any issues. This is your time. Seeing none, we'll move down to minutes. So the minutes of January 16th, 2023 council meeting, are there? Any errors or omissions with those? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the minutes circulated? Councillor Tanner, seconded by Deputy Mayor Fugier. All those in favor. Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. We'll go down to planning and C8 special commercial redesignation. Vic is probably still tired from Saturday at the LCLC.
It was a lot of fun. Thank you. So staffer seeking direction, the resolution to begin the process of redesignating and rezoning properties located in the special commercial C8 zone, also including amendments to the neighborhood commercial C7 zone and related policy framework. This process is staff-led and is considered part of the larger review of the town's planning documents.
Okay, any questions? Just kind of the beginning of the journey. Okay, I'm looking for a motion, please. Councillor Tanner?
I move that council for the town of Bridgewater direct staff to begin the process of redesignation and rezoning C8 special commercial properties, including updates to the C7 neighborhood commercial designation, and engaging landowners on proposed amendments.
Do you have a secondary, please? Councillor Conklin, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. Down 6.2, application for substantive amendment to development agreement, notice of public participation meeting for 372 Aberdeen Road.
Thank you, I'll do this as well. So yes, this is an application briefing for council and public information. An application was received on September 19th, 2022 for a substantive amendment to the development agreement to expand the existing Ridgewood assisted living facility at 372 Aberdeen Road. Subject property is located in the comprehensive residential zone, and in that zone, all developments permitted in the institutional zone are permitted through development agreement. The existing development agreement specifies that the maximum square footage of the facility is a substantial matter and may not be changed or altered except by amendment to the agreement. Therefore, substantive amendment in the form of a new development agreement is required. The property currently contains an existing 25,800 square foot facility with 52 bedrooms. The applicant is proposing an expansion to add 46 bedrooms in two phases. First phase would include 9,600 square feet and 22 bedrooms, and the second phase would include 8,400 square feet and 24 bedrooms. Both phases would be a single-story additions to the rear of the existing building. So a public participation meeting is scheduled for February 8th at 6:00 p.m. Hearing council chambers.
Any questions on that? Okay, looking forward to seeing that move along the process. Then we'll go down to correspondence for action. A request to purchase a section of Logan Road from Michelin.
So the request is to have council deem a portion of Logan Road surplus, and then Michelin is requesting that they be able to acquire that. When the interchange is put in and the connector road connects up to Logan Road, it'll essentially make that portion of Logan Road a dead-end road. There's some land assembly efforts that are underway right now that may result in there no longer being a need for that road to be public. And therefore that, that's why the request is before council to consider. And doing so, there are a number of things that council would have to ensure were satisfied. There's some temporary servicing requirements for some buildings that would remain temporarily. There's the possibility of turning areas depending on timing. So the suggestion is, is that council refer the matter to staff to work with, with the representatives from Michelin to ensure that any outstanding matters can be addressed prior to council considering the request to deem the road surplus and sell to Michelin.
Any questions on the CAO on that item? Someone prepared to make a motion? Deputy Mayor Fugier?
Yes, Your Worship, I'll make a motion that council for the town of Bridgewater refer the request contained in document 23-017 to purchase a section of Logan Road and PID 60383585 to staff to review and determine any outstanding issues prior to council considering any offer to purchase or carrying out the public process for such a land sale.
Thank you. Any, do I have a secondary, please? Councillor Caldwell, further discussion?
Question.
Question being called, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. Lunenburg County Accessibility Advisory Committee, citizen appointment. So this is a regional committee, and so our, this was brought forward as a ask of the mayors and wardens to refer back to our councils. And so the recommendation is here from our accessibility coordinator. Is someone prepared to make a motion? Councillor McDonald?
I would move that council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the Lunenburg County Accessibility Advisory Committee and appoint, is it Jeanne or Jeanne?
I think Jeanne.
I hope so. Jeanne, I apologize if that's wrong, to the LCAAC for a term of three years.
Thank you, do I have a secondary? It's a race over here. Deputy Mayor Fugier, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. Down to reports and recommendations, flood risk and adaptation strategy requests for 2324 operational budget preapproval.
Thank you. So via the flood risk assessment program, the town has received 50% funding up to $52,143 for a project tentatively named the flood risk and adaptation strategy. We received an extension to the funding. It was granted for last fiscal year, but we received an extension to the end of the 2324 fiscal year. So staff are hoping to get the RFP process going soon, so preapproval of the budget is needed. So the strategy itself, the idea is to gain a better understanding of the flood risk scenarios that we have. The data is with the town. We had a flood risk study commissioned close to 10 years ago, but the data science should remain the same. So it's about how to apply those flood risk scenarios when considering developments along the La Haye River. So how to best protect people and property in a fair and consistent manner while still allowing development downtown, in the core, and up and down the La Haye River. The other part of the project would ask a consultant for adaptation planning for town-owned properties up and down the river to best mitigate flooding and erosion sedimentation as a result of flood risk.
Any questions on this one? Okay, someone prepared to make a motion? Councillor Caldwell?
I move that council for the town of Bridgewater preapprove the 202324 operational budget related to the flood risk and adaptation strategy in the amount of $100,000 with 50% funded via the flood risk infrastructure investment program.
Thank you, seconded by Councillor McDonald. I know it's, this is, the rains we've had are just this winter. It's, you know, reason enough to make sure that we have the science right and the information to deploy it correctly. And I see Cape Breton's doing some interesting things with property owners where they can have individual flood risk assessments done. Now they have different challenges than we do, but I just saw that announcement this weekend, which I thought was interesting. So it's very top of mind for most of us in Nova Scotia. We have a mover and a secondary. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. 9.2 is citizen appointment to the Bridgewater Museum Commission. Someone prepared to make that motion? Councillor Durbin?
Your Worship, I would move that council of the town of Bridgewater appoint Holly Rudden to serve on the Bridgewater Museum Commission for a three-year term, effective immediately, and expiry on January the 16th, 2026.
Thank you. Do I have a secondary, please? Councillor Tanner, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. And I'd be remiss if we did not extend our condolences on behalf of town council to Linda and the Bedford family, and the museum commission, and the friends of the Desperay Museum, the passing of Chris. I didn't know what to say when I heard the news, I'm still struggling with what to say. Chris just, like, lived and breathed for this community and did so much, whether it was for the museum or through his work and other roles. He did charitable roles through his work. He was a champion for the community, definitely a champion for the museum, certainly irreplaceable. So our condolences to the entire museum family, and especially Linda at this news, which was quite shocking. So I had a lot of respect for Chris. Yes, Councillor Durbin?
Yes, I just replaced Chris as chairman of the Heritage Advisory Committee, which he was chair one for a few years with Sheeran. And we're all hurting, and we're all missing him, and we're going to try and do something special in memory of Chris, and it's on our agenda for the next Heritage Advisory Committee. So we'll be getting back to you. Very special person, loved by all.
Yep. I don't think you could add up the hours he gave. Moving on, 9.3, donations to So Shore Fieldhouse Society through the designated Communities Fund. So just a reminder to the public that this is, people make donations to the town on behalf of the fieldhouse, and then we just release those back to the fieldhouse. So just to clarify that, as always, someone prepared to make that motion? Deputy Mayor?
Yes, Your Worship, I'll make a motion that council approve a grant in the amount of $8,840 to the So Shore Fieldhouse Society for the multi-use facility on Glen Allen Drive.
for the multi-use facility on Glen Allen Drive in accordance with policy ninety-seven, Designated Community Project Fund.
Thank you, Dr. Secundary. Counselor Conklin, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried, thank you. Down to our capital budget presentation. And C I R Director of Finance is here.
Good evening. Patrick's just putting some slides up for me, but you should also have a copy of the same slides. So I just wanted to go through kind of the highlights of the budget and then we'll go through some of the detailed projects that are contained within that. So this is just a ten-year summary. So this is kind of the twenty-five pages put into one, so it's just high level. So you'll see for the carry-forward budget, there is just nineteen point six million dollars being carried forward from the twenty-two, twenty-three year as recommended. But also the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four capital budget total is sixteen million one hundred and forty-six thousand. You'll also see on there the debt service ratio for each year as well as all the different sources of funding for the projects contained in each of those annual budgets. This is the exact same information, but actually sorted by department. So you can see the types, so you can see how much is allocated to transit in, for example, in that ten-year timeframe. So this transit has a total budget of six hundred and ninety-eight thousand. If you look at the parks column, you can see that has just over one point seven million dollars. So that would contain things like the Generations Active Park and some other parks improvement projects. So just a different view of the same information. As we've discussed before, because of the significant amount of projects and in particular wastewater projects, our debt service ratio is projected to increase over the next ten years as we complete those projects. Just go through some of the highlights of the actual twenty-three, twenty-four capital budget. So basically, some things that weren't in the twenty-three, twenty-four last year or some of the things we wanted to highlight. We've included Centennial Trail Bridge expenses as a result of condition studies, though there's some new things in there you'll see over the ten years related to that. You'll see in twenty-three, twenty-four museum building upgrades, which has a budget of four hundred and fifty thousand. And you'll also see grant funding identified in there as there is a grant application out there, but the funds aren't confirmed. The Parks Improvement Plan, so you'll see three projects in particular being addressed in the capital budget. Last year during the capital budget, council had directed us to include Pearl Street paving in the twenty-three, twenty-four year, so you'll see that coming back for your review. The pavement renewal budget is one point three million dollars, so that's a significant increase. That would be our annual amount plus a significant portion of Dufferin being paved as a result of other projects on Dufferin around the same time, so we'll look at that one. There's, for transit, there's a bus stop improvement plan now implemented over the ten years. Engineering and police vehicles, budgeting of E B's for those. Business park infrastructure continuing as we work on exit twelve A and the infrastructure requirements and significant wastewater system upgrades. The one thing you won't see, council had referred a project, the Kinsman Field Lighting Project, to staff. And when it was reviewed, it was identified that that would push the Generations Active Park projects out even further. And council had wanted that moved up, so it's not included in there at this time. I also wanted to talk about the capital carry-forwards. So you'll, I mentioned earlier that the carry-forwards is just over nineteen million dollars. So a couple of things I wanted to identify. One, that's the entire budget for those projects. The projects could be ninety percent complete, but I can't fund the projects until they're done. So we have to carry the entire budget forward so the projects can be finished up. So the nineteen sounds really high, but it's a result of needing to take the whole budget, not just the incomplete portion of those projects. In addition, then I also separated out projects related to the business park and projects related to pump station eleven, which is the big one, near Shipyard's Landing. So when we take those out, those two projects out were left really with the carry-forward being just over four million dollars for the remaining projects. And you'll also see a report from me this evening regarding capital projects for preapproval. As we've identified, really, we've been having issues with pricing with tenders and things like that, so there's a number of projects being recommended due to pricing to get those out early. And in addition to that, supply chain issues trying to get ahead and knowing if we want them in fiscal twenty-three, twenty-four, we will likely need to get those projects moving now. So that's the end of the presentation itself, but I do intend to go through the capital budget, the twenty-three, twenty-four in particular, and we can go through the individual projects. My intention was that I'll kind of go through them and staff are here. If you have any questions about particular ones, especially if they relate to engineering or wastewater, Matt and Audrey are here as well as Jessica. So that is, really starts on page three of the capital budget document. The first page is the cover page, and then there's the carry-forwards. So we'll be starting on the third page end, which is twenty-three, twenty-four. The first project listed is the B M A Auditorium space on the second floor with a budget in twenty-three, twenty-four of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Engineering had made a presentation to council on November the fourteenth and with some projects that needed to be done right away, and the rest were deferred to the capital budget process. So that's what's included in the two hundred and seventy-five thousand. There's bridge railing replacement program for one hundred thousand dollars. Brookside Cemetery Colimbarium. So there was part of the project budgeted last year for groundwork, and then this is the actual installation. As our current ones reach their capacity, then we budget as we need those added. The business park interchange exit twelve A should actually be a total budget of eight point four million. I have an error on the carry-forward schedule, but the twenty-three, twenty-four portion of that project is two point three million dollars. And the line item right above that is business park servicing cost of one point five million dollars, so those go together. The next project is the Centennial Trail Bridge Condition Improvements. And the budget for this year is twenty-three thousand dollars and will be funded from operating. Crosswalk Improvement at Dufferin, or on Dufferin at Hillcrest, and that's budgeted at thirty-five thousand. There's a couple of energy management projects, an energy management program, as well as solar P V study and design. So those projects are one hundred and eighty-five thousand and a hundred thousand dollars. The next two items are equipment, the first one, Abaco for two hundred thousand dollars, and the next one, a tractor loader for seventy thousand dollars. The next is fire department bunker gear, they're replacing ten sets, or budgeting to replace ten sets in twenty-three, twenty-four at a cost of forty thousand dollars. The Generations Active Park Conceptual Plan, so it's detailed out the five-year plan in the project description. So the forty thousand dollars budgeted this year is for planning and design. The next budget item is guard rail replacement program, which is an annual program and the budget's ten thousand dollars for that. The next one is High Street Upgrade, which is a significant project with a budget of one point seven million dollars. Part of it will be, is intended to be funded with grants due to our grant application and the rest will be funded with debt, so that's one of our first large projects funded with debt in this budget. The next one is inflow reduction and combined sewer overflows at a budget of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then there's inflow and infiltration upgrades with a budget of sixty-five thousand dollars. As mentioned in the highlights, the next one is the museum building upgrades, which is new to the budget, and that is for issues identified with the museum building. And that four hundred and fifty thousand dollars is estimated to be budgeted with three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of grants and one hundred thousand dollars of debt. And if the grants are not confirmed, then the project wouldn't go ahead without that funding in place.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, Kim, just back on the gap conceptual plan.
Yeah.
That million is for what?
That would be for the overall project, so that's the total budgeted cost for the things that are denoted there, year-one design, year-two servicing, splash pad playground, and so on.
Not to actually build those items?
I believe so.
Okay, when was the last time we looked at that, out of curiosity?
Yeah.
I don't think it's been increased for, like, it's been a couple of years since we looked at that.
Okay.
Did you, did you want to come down to the, sorry?
No way.
The money in the budget for this coming fiscal year is to do the detailed design, which would enable us to update the numbers.
Okay.
Because we haven't updated that in some time and we recognize
Okay.
that it needs to be done, but we also, we had intended originally, a number of years ago, to do all of that design work in-house, but we can't, so we need to get that design work done.
Gotcha, thank you.
So I guess the short answer in accounting terms is, that's the most accurate estimates we have at this time, but they will likely change. Anything else on the first page? All right, so on the next page, the museum humidification upgrades, the budget for that is forty-two thousand dollars, and that's to address some building issues that have been identified. And the next project's actually for the museum as well, which was refinishing some exterior wood beams at a cost of ten thousand dollars. The next three projects are identified for parks, and that would be Pinecrass, Windburn, and Woodland Gardens. And improvements for those as part of the Parks Improvement Plan that was added to a number of years of the ten-year plan. The next one is pavement renewal, and the amount is six hundred thousand dollars. So I just wanted to note, in the past, we've always said we have four hundred thousand in capital and two hundred thousand in operating. We just took the operating and added it to the capital so that it's all in one spot. So council will see that it's actually, the beginning number's six hundred thousand, it's not because we increased the annual amount. We just thought it was easier for everyone if it's all in the same spot. In addition to that, there's a number of projects going on on Dufferin Street related to, I think, wastewater. And because of that, we'll be tearing up part of the street. So staff have suggested that it might make some sense to redo the paving curb sidewalk in that area of York to Walnut at a cost of seven hundred thousand dollars. If this is not in council's interest, we would just be patching the street over the part that was torn up. And so it's there to refresh that part while we're there, already on that street. But Matt could probably tell you more about that if you need it. And then the next paving project to add to that as well would be the Pearl Street paving that was deferred from last year into the twenty-three, twenty-four for council consideration. So that's some pretty significant dollars in paving in the budget. Next is the Pinecrass subdivision storm sewer at a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and that's a kind of an annual program where there's been improvements in that area annually. The next few are equipment, so a plate tamper at twenty-two thousand, the water replacement at fifteen thousand, a police vehicle identified for a marked E B for a hundred and ten thousand. Police portable radios, the budget here is sixty thousand dollars. However, I have received a message indicating that we could see that actually be increased due to current prices. We're still working on that, so we're expecting that number might actually go a bit higher. Public Works Garage Storage, so twenty thousand dollars budgeted for clearing some additional space for staff to store products. Couple of projects at Shipyard's Landing, shelter replacement, those would be the shelters over the picnic tables with a budget of fifteen thousand, as well as replacing the walkway through Shipyard's Landing at a cost of seventy-five thousand. There's sidewalk improvement at Glen Allen Drive, which is near the hospital, for eighty-five thousand dollars. And we have received grant funding for seventy thousand dollars towards that project already. There's the regular sidewalk improvement program of ninety thousand dollars. Storm sewer corrugated culvert replacement program, again, another annual program with a budget of ten thousand dollars. Some projects at Town Hall, which include a camera system upgrade of thirty-five thousand, upgrade to council chambers for a hundred and fifty thousand. And continue with the improvements to the Town Hall heat pump system on the second and third floors for a hundred and fifty thousand. Questions about page two? Onto page three. So as I mentioned before, we have implemented bus stop improvement plan throughout the budget, so the budget for twenty-three, twenty-four is twenty thousand dollars for a pad, bench, and a shelter at stop number ten. We've also included a vehicle for Public Works, a half-ton E B truck for a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Now, the second truck being replaced is budgeted for a three-quarter ton for sixty-five thousand dollars and not an electric vehicle, as they're not available in three-quarter ton trucks at this time. So we're still, go with a regular gas or hybrid. We've also added to the budget a five-ton international, or replacement of the five-ton international truck with a budget of two hundred and twenty-five thousand. The remaining projects, there's a list of upgrades to the wastewater treatment plant, which include the bar screen at a budget of eight hundred and fifty thousand, P L C upgrade of seventeen thousand. Separate the separation of storm sewers, two point six million dollars, and this is an, or yes, an annual amount that's through various parts of town throughout the ten-year project. The wastewater treatment plant U V upgrade redundancy with a budget of one point three million. The water tower project for twenty-three, twenty-four portion would be four hundred and fifteen thousand with an overall one point five million dollar budget for that project. And the Wilds Brook Bridge construction with a budget of four hundred thousand. So overall, for this sixteen million dollar budget, we are budgeting to use one point three of capital from operating, which is a bit more than last year, but remembering two hundred thousand of paving was funded from operating last year, so that funding has moved over. Six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from gas tax, which is about equivalent to our annual allotment. Three point five million dollars in grants, which, some of which are confirmed and some are, we're waiting for approval on. Almost eight point nine million dollars in debt, and with the rest being funded from capital reserve and operating reserve.
Kim, could you just clarify your note on the water tower? Anticipate project to be over budget, but then later it says total revised budget of one point five. So is one point five the revised, or are you still expecting it to go over one point five?
All of the above and some of the above.
Okay.
It was originally in the budget for four hundred and fifteen thousand, and it was increased for this budget to the one point five million dollar total.
Yeah, okay.
Which is, which is our commitment.
Yeah.
Regardless of the price of the water tower overall.
Right, okay.
Other questions? Counselor Caldwell?
A while back, residents of Star Street had asked for some traffic calming measures. I'm just wondering if staff considered that and if that may require any capital costs?
Do you want to wander down? Thanks, Matt. No worries.
Yeah, so what's outstanding on the traffic calming measures is a memo to council on to get direction on how council wants to proceed overall with the program itself. So at this point in the proposed capital or operating, staff haven't proposed any initiatives in that manner, because there's, if we follow what other municipalities would be doing with respect to traffic calming, there's with respect to traffic calming, there's a procedure or process to go through to ensure that first there is an issue, so how you, I guess, you quantify that issue first and deal that through that, possibly through petitions, possibly some radar or speed, speed radar and those, those types of things. And then if there is in fact an issue itself, then there may, depending on what that issue is, we'd be looking at implementing whether it be speed pillows or speed bumps. But at this point, my goal would be getting a memo to council describing or a system or procedure to implement this coming year, unfortunately.
Other questions on these items? Just kind of processing, I guess. It's a lot. I just, I know that when, when I look at the chart and that big spike, and I know people have questions and concerns and things, and then you look at the budget and rest, fifty percent of that is just wastewater, like fifty percent of all of that. So, you know, there's a lot, we have a lot to do. We have more paving, we need to do more paving, we need to do more infrastructure, but if you had, if we could have backed out the wastewater, then we'd be talking very, very different story, but, and we have to do the wastewater, I think the public's very much on the side, we should not be flowing into the river, so we have to proceed with that. So I just want to clear, like, make sure people understand that it's fifty percent of that. It's a huge, huge number over ten years. Any other questions on that? Okay. Did you want to move to that?
Yeah, so I think tonight the intention is to, prior to getting you to, to look at the capital carried forwards and the capital items that were requesting council give consideration for pre-budget approval, it was so you could see the entire picture for the fiscal year. So tonight, it's recommended that you look at the capital carried forwards and the capital pre-approvals for twenty-three, twenty-four, so that staff can continue with the projects on the go, as well as start those projects that we feel will need to prior to the budget approval.
So basically, you're setting us up?
Setting up.
For the next part of the presentation?
That's right.
Okay. Did you want to?
Keep going.
Keep going?
All right, perfect. So the next report that you have is regarding the capital projects being carried forward, so the nineteen million dollars of projects. And so we're asking council to carry forward nineteen million, five hundred and fifty-four thousand, eight twenty-seven. The report has a slightly different number, but the recommendation should have the correct amount, and that's to carry forward the projects that are already in progress. If anybody has any questions about the individual projects, we can go through those, but they're, they're pretty straightforward, they're mostly wastewater pump stations and exit twelve A related, and others that we just haven't received the, the goods, so they're being carried forward.
Any questions on those, Councilor Thorburn?
Would you like a motion, Your Worship?
Sure, yeah, put a motion on the floor.
I approve that council for the town of Bridgewater approved the carry forward of the twenty-two, twenty-three capital project budgets to the twenty-three, twenty-four as contained in document twenty-three dash zero two-one, up to a total estimated amount of nineteen million, five hundred and fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
Can I have a second, Eric? Tanner, discussion, or any questions that anyone has? So, I don't know, maybe I, so, did you explain how it's, how the carry forward is done differently in the past?
Yeah.
Anyone understood that?
Yes, so it's one hundred percent of the budget, not just the portion which is not complete yet.
I just want to make sure everyone understands, because for, for some of us, it was done very differently, right? It was only carried forward the portion, so.
It's a, it's a little bit more simple when you're not funding it with debt, but when we're funding with debt, we can't finalize a project and not have funding in place, so we have to carry the whole thing forward. So it's just easier to have all the apples and oranges done the same.
That's a lot of apples and oranges. Okay, everyone's clear on that? We have a mover and a second here. Any further discussion?
Question.
Questions have been called, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so the next report is regarding capital projects for pre-approval. So in that report, you'll see a request for ten-point-eight million dollars, or just slightly over, being requested for pre-approval. I know that's a large percentage of the sixteen million dollar budget that's being proposed, but that summed up in a, in a short list of projects being business park, the remainder of the eight-point-four million dollars of that entire project. And the reason we're asking for the rest of that is just so that staff can get tenders out and proceed with that one, so that the entire eight-point-four million actually has budget approval, including the carry forward, as well as the amount that's in the twenty-three, twenty-four capital budget, as well as the servicing costs of one-point-five million dollars for the business park, the High Street upgrades, which are partially a part of that project, as well as inflow reduction and combined sewer overflows, the Dufferin Street portion of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and water replacement, a five-ton truck, and some wastewater treatment, equipment and upgrades, bar screen, storm sewer separation, and UV upgrade redundancy. So a short list of projects, but at ten-point-eight million dollars.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, just a question. I know last year for paving upgrades, it was, and I know it all has to do with contractors' work, and just feedback from the general public was that it was late in the year. I'm just wondering if we can get our paving tender out earlier, if it would be a requirement to have a pre-approval amount for paving, I'm just asking.
I'm, I'm not sure. I know that a lot of these projects are on that list for that very reason.
Yeah.
But not particularly the paving.
So the paving for High Street and Dufferin would be included in this pre-approval, right?
Not Dufferin, but the, the High Street would. Dufferin was the separate amount.
Oh, right, if that was pulled out separate.
This is just the, the portion of Dufferin.
All right. Does that include St. Phillips Street as well?
Or Star Street.
That would be included in the exit twelve A and servicing budget.
So the, what would be our annual pavement program, pavement management program, that tender, I was just going through the, our annual routine tendering with staff last week. That one normally is issued, I believe, in May for award in June.
Okay.
And then we would start, it would give us July, part of June, July and August to get all the pre-work done with manholes and whatnot to curb, et cetera, so we'll start some of the prep work for that, but normally we don't get to actually doing any pavement renewals until mid-August it would be.
Okay, so.
Yeah, we'll have a motion communication for that, so.
More time sensitive with kind of staff doing some pre-work?
Yeah, so hopefully, we will do, we'll start the prep work as soon, if, if any of that prep work can be done through operations budgets once budget is approved, but if it's tied to the capital side, of course, we'll start that, it'll probably, I think we did some projects early or late May last year with curb in some locations.
Is it, before you go, Matt, is it at all feasible to issue multi-year tenders for paving to, to kind of save some of that time of you having to prep it and, and in terms of the tender package, or is it not feasible because it's such a volatile price?
I would say the, what you, the latter. I'm not used to issuing pavement tenders in multi-year just because of the costs, you likely have to have fuel escalation clauses and clauses in there as well, so. But normally, with the shortlisting of projects that we would do for pavement management is tied to how much we're going to have annually for budget, so I think it would be kind of difficult to do, to, to do any multi-year and guarantee quantities as well.
Counsel Tanner?
I probably know the answer to this, but for any of these projects that have to go to procurement or tender process, will any of them or all of them be awarded prior to budget approval timeline? Highly unlikely, I guess, but.
I know that some of them, because of the dollars involved, the posting time is, is about thirty days, so I'm not sure. I know that they want to get, I know in speaking with Audrey at least, she was hoping to get, you know, all of the tender documents ready so they could go out, but we don't want to spend time working on them if, you know, if we can't put them out before March thirty, you know, if we have to wait until budget approval in April, it will definitely tie things up and result in maybe not getting as good a pricing or any pricing on projects. It's more, I think, about the timing of getting ahead of other units potentially.
I guess for me, I'm just concerned that are these numbers good numbers, or will we find ourselves in a position after we approve a budget where tenders are coming back much higher than, or substantially higher than the expected, estimated?
I wish you had the answer.
We do.
Still a moving target these days, unfortunately.
Yeah, and some of them, like, if you look at the business park servicing cost of one-point-five million, that, that is essentially stop allotting some funds because we are concerned that the budget amount for St. Phillips and High Street, when it was originally set, given the volatility in the market when it comes to pricing, that it's too low. So we've added that one-point-five in there to provide that, that, I guess, buffer and that contingency, so that we would have the funding, hopefully, to, to do the project without having to come back looking for more funds.
Any further questions? Go once, come twice. Someone prepared to make a motion?
I approve that council pre-approved the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four capital project as presented in document twenty-three dash zero two-two in the amount of ten million, eight hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars.
Thank you, seconded by Counselor Dalton. I, I always hope that when we go up with pre-approvals, that we, like you said, we're, we're kind of ahead of everyone and we get a better price. I know we, we tend to approve our budget much quicker than most, so hopefully we can also get ahead of those other, especially with paving. All right, we have a mover and a second here, ready for the question?
Question.
All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. Okay, nine-point-seven, RFP for legal services.
So the town's legal service contract with the Power Leaf Ready and Refuse expires March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, and it was a five-year contract with a two-year renewal. So in anticipation of that, staff developed a request for proposals for legal services for the town, and we proposed a five-year term with the same option for a two-year renewal if so desired, so this report only deals with the five years, and council can evaluate whether or not they want to extend for another two. The proposal closed in December, the request for proposal closed on December fourteenth. Two proposals were received, and both were compliant with the submission requirements. You can see in the report that the two proposals received were from Power Leaf Ready and Refuse and Wickwire Home. There is an evaluation committee that was created, consisting of myself, the Director of Finance, and the Director of Community Development. We reviewed the proposals against the criteria that was specified in the request proposal, and you can see the criteria in the report as well, so there was qualifications, references, additional services, alternate legal counsel for a technical score, and the total was seventy-five points, and you needed to have a minimum of sixty in order to go on to the next stage, which was in a separate envelope, which was the pricing, and that had a point value of twenty-five. So you can see that from the scoring, Power Leaf Ready and Refuse scored higher than Wickwire Home just slightly by a few points, and, and the proposals, it was noted that Power, Power Leaf Ready and Refuse does not provide labor law services, so they don't specialize in that, and they don't presently. So presently, the town secures that type of service independent of, of Power Leaf Ready and Refuse. Wickwire Home does provide that. And so there was a discussion with Wickwire Home about whether or not they'd be prepared to honor their pricing for the labor portion of, of their proposal call, and they are, as well as specialized litigation services, and they'd be prepared to do that as well based on the proposal submitted. So the recommendation is, is that council award RFP twenty-two dash eleven to Power Leaf Ready and Refuse as per the proposal submitted for town legal services, accepting specialized matters such as complex litigation, labor, and employment matters, and any other matters determined by mutual agreement of the parties, so that would be, they would determine that they didn't have the time or the expertise to provide that, in which case, we, the second part of the recommendation is that the council also award to Wickwire Home for specialized legal services, including complex litigation, labor, and employment matters, and in Nova Scotia and other legal matters as determined appropriate. So they would be the firm that we would go to for those services that Power Leaf Ready and Refuse were unable to provide, and that the as per the prices submitted per their proposal call.
Any questions? Someone prepared to make a motion? Counsel Coughlin?
Thank you. I move that council for the town of Bridgewater award RFP two-zero-two-two dash one-one as follows, to Power Leaf Ready and Refuse as per the proposal submitted for town legal services, accepting specialized matters such as complex litigation, labor, and employment matters, and other matters as determined by, by mutual agreement of the parties, and to Wickwire Home for specialized legal services, including complex litigation, labor, and employment matters, and other legal matters as determined appropriate.
Thank you, seconded by Counselor Thorburn. Further discussion?
None.
All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. Nine-point-eight, we have our strategic priorities update for the third quarter.
Council has included in the agenda all of the quarterly reports for the various departments, which speak to also the strategic priorities, but also the day-to-day initiatives or projects that each department's working on. I wasn't intending to go through that, it's normal, but just to highlight through some of the strategic priorities and what has been accomplished in the last quarter. So you can see that under the Affordable Housing Plan, staff brought forward a housing grant program, which in the third quarter, which was approved by council. We've had, under Energize Bridgewater, the Investment Systems Report presented to council, and it's being discussed for tonight, and we, there was some work completed on the privacy impact policy and assessment report. In addition to that, data governance, which kind of originated from the Energize Bridgewater program, and there's going to, a significant amount of work done there in developing the privacy management program and an implementation plan. So that's been, that's been more at the staff level, and we'll be bringing that report forward to you, to you in February, as you can see that. In asset management, council had their training in the second quarter, and the Asset Management Working Group, which consisted of representatives from all departments, completed training, there were three sessions done in the last quarter for staff, and so those have been done. Accessibility Plan, council's receiving those reports, and there were some updates on some of the standards and activities in the quarter three with Allen. Plan review, staff continued to work on a plan review, and they did do a quarterly check-in during the last quarter as well. With respects to the downtown redevelopment, that was primarily about the parking study and looking at the North Parkade and whether or not there was a need for that. So the parking study concluded that it was an essential component of the parking complement or supply for the downtown area, and therefore, during the last quarter, we looked at the introducing that into the capital plan, which you saw tonight. In terms of the organization review, during the last quarter, we made changes to the community development and engineering departments, and realigning fire inspection with the community development, fire and building, so those changes were implemented. Council size review, in the last quarter, we completed the report with council for the application to the Nova Scotia Utility Review Board to keep the size of council the same, and that had been submitted to the Nova Scotia Utility Review Board, and there is a hearing in March here in council chambers. The other things that have been accomplished during the last quarter, police services, completed their strategic prior plan, and that was presented to council. Council, senior management started the strategic priorities review of those and preparing that for. that for a January workshop with council. A business directory was completed and finalized by Economic Development. E-procurement with Bonfire was implemented during the last quarter as well, so we're receiving, doing proposal calls electronically and receiving bids electronically, which is something council asked for. Energize Bridgewater launched their home upgrade program, and they also had a housing supposian at the LCLC during the last period. And in terms of HR, there were a number of recruitments that were completed, and so some positions that were vacant. The community navigator was a new position that council created, so we completed the recruitment for that. Fire inspector, planning tech. Development control tech mission recruitment was just finalized, but we started it in the last quarter. The recreation administrative support was finalized, and the planner one recruitment was finalized as well. So you'll see some new faces pretty soon, introduction to council. So those are the primary highlights from the last quarter, and as indicated, all the quarterly reports are there, and if you have any questions, please feel free to ask now or ask later.
Any questions at CIO? No? All right, well, then, oh, Councilor Thorburn, yeah?
Well, not so much the CIO as a public information officer. When I read that report on our social media accounts, the numbers are pretty good, especially the numbers for people watching the council meetings, which is well done to Patrick, and certainly, the numbers look good. And I was amazed by the number of grants that was written by the various departments. It shows that staff are really doing job, and just want to thank the team for this report, this next report, and it shows that staff are doing an awesome job. So just a heads up and say thank you.
Great, thanks. Yeah, I'm always amazed at the number of people who watch council, like it's hundreds of people, so not always packed in here. Any other questions? Okay, in your council package, you have the briefing notes from the January 23rd discussion session, so just the public, all of these documents are available on the Bridgewater website in detail. So we had a presentation from PVSC, so one of the things I did want to highlight for the public is everyone got their assessments. I know lots of people aren't super over the moon about them, so if you have questions, you can either call PVSC, or you can email them, and the email address is inquiry@pvsc.ca, or you can just Google PVSC, and their website comes up as the first hit on Google, and there's, you can navigate there, their phone number, email address, and some FAQs about how to read your assessment. I'm sure all of you are getting some inquiries from people just wondering why the number looks like this, why the number looks like that. So PVSC is the group best equipped to answer those questions. And then we talked about commercial zone items procurement, and as was in the capital that we discussed, some of the issues at the museum with mold and trying to rectify that to preserve the collection. So again, all of that's online on our website. Down to Energize Bridgewater Investment System. I can see Leon is here.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This report is a request for direction to instruct staff in where to go following the completion of a number of intersecting pieces of work that relate to the Energize Bridgewater program. The most recent component of which was completed by a consulting firm that we retained for about an eight-month period to look at the long-term availability of private sector financing to support Energize Bridgewater initiatives, specifically the Energize, sorry, the home upgrades or the residential energy efficiency programs that were launched in December and are hoping to be expanded on, as well as the idea of creating community-scale energy systems. So the work by Tapestry Community Capital, council received a presentation from them at the November discussion session, and the report today really provides council with a bit of a synthesis of what does this mean, where do we think the town should go from here, and what is council's wishes with regard to this investment system idea in the Energize Bridgewater program. So in a nutshell, the opportunity in front of us right now is to really pursue two linked scopes of work. The first is to, as was recommended by the consulting firm, approach existing community economic development investment fund organizations in Nova Scotia to assess whether they would be interested in being a private sector partner for the town to achieve greater private investment into its Energize programs. So there's a piece of work there around defining the business opportunity, knocking on some doors, assessing whether there's investment opportunity through that as Tapestry explored. And then the second, which is not the same work, but it's very linked, is the idea of undertaking further due diligence work around community energy systems. So whether those are solar or wind, we understand that there's a greater return on investment through wind, really going through the next steps of undertaking basically the engineering work, you know, identifying and securing land parcels potentially for development and so on. And the reason that staff has connected these two ideas that seem like very different projects is because they kind of do go hand in hand. CDFs are developers of renewable energy systems in Nova Scotia, and there's a track record of them doing that. And at the same time, we know that there's probably not enough financial opportunity for a CDF to only support home upgrades in Bridgewater. They really need an economy of scale in order to create that kind of an investment platform for, you know, for a community the size of Bridgewater, which is why the idea of linking it with a community energy system increases the opportunity. So the options that staff has laid out for you is to first invest a bit of upfront staff time to knock on some doors for existing community funds, see if there is an opportunity there, and if there is demonstrated interest, then proceeding with the remainder of the proposed scopes of work. For a total cost, and I know there's a large range on this, but somewhere between $250,000 and $450,000, funding sources to be determined, or forego the initial upfront investment of staff time and move directly into that work, or to take some other action as council might determine on this matter. There is a bunch of analysis in the staff report. Happy to respond to any questions you might have in seeking your direction.
Well, let's start with questions. Are there any questions for Leon?
Do we have any CDFs that are involved in this kind of opportunity currently? Similar?
Sorry, I'm just going to go ahead. So we've done an initial scan through Greg, our development, sorry, our Economic Development Officer, and Greg has identified a list of something like 35 existing CDFs in Nova Scotia. A number of them that are currently active are involved in renewable energy and energy sector investment. I mean, quite a lot of the wind capacity that's been developed in Nova Scotia has in fact been developed through CDFs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Other questions or comments?
So Leon, just a follow-up perhaps. So I consider what we want to do, maybe I'm completely off-base, but of a smaller scale than some of the projects that I've seen some of these other CDFs do, most of the CDFs do. So I guess my question more is, are there CDFs doing multiple projects, some of which are at a perhaps smaller scale like we're attempting to start off with at least? Does that make sense?
I see what you're saying, yeah. So I think really what would happen is that if the town were to reach out and express a business opportunity, it would really be up to the CDFs to indicate what kind of a scale of initiative they might be willing to undertake with the town. The geographic basis may not need to be limited to just Bridgewater for development, you know, energy development work in the area. What would probably just be unique is the types of projects that the town might be willing to engage in some kind of a partnership around.
Okay.
And Leon, correct me if I'm wrong, but one of the regulatory framework under which we would have to work in order for a project to be possible is somewhat limiting right now. So there's renewable to retail, there's the net zeroing, you can power your own facilities, but at this point, we're not necessarily convinced that there's, the regulations allow us to do the type of project we'd want to do, but this would be about getting ready, unless you can get in under an existing CDF in an existing project. It's getting ready, creating a project so that when the regulatory framework does change, then we're ready to roll, because normally you don't have three years to then plan a project, because these projects take time to plan. One of the things that we did talk about when we were at the strategic priorities setting workshop with council was the fact that we did see the value in getting a project ready, or council saw the value in that, just not necessarily convinced that this year would be the year to spend the $250,000 to $400,000 shaping up a project, but rather spend the time, the economic development officer's time, talking to CDFs and exploring what interests and possibilities could be out there, and then in the following years, build that project and put the funds in their budget to do that.
Does that help you?
Yeah, no, it makes sense, I guess. Are we premature in these steps, I guess? Given the regulatory issues?
Yeah.
We talked about that at meetings before, I can't remember when, was it summer, spring, whatever it was?
I think the issue is, is that, so the resource assessment that was previously done was somewhat limited, right? For example, if you use a wind project, right, CBCL didn't set up, SNC Loudon, sorry, did a resource assessment, they didn't set up met towers to read wind, right? So those that, and that's the variable in your project is wind, so you'd want to study the wind, make sure that you knew on that site what the wind was. So there's that resource assessment that would have to be done at a more in-depth level, and then it's how it feeds into the Nova Scotia Powers infrastructure that would have to be analyzed as well to understand when there's spillage and not, and different things like that, that takes time. So if the regulations change, and then you have to get a project in the gate under a certain timeline, you really need to have that project pretty scoped out.
Yeah, the scope of work identified here is 12 to 24 months, and remember that all of that is, that's just to get you to something close to shovel-ready. We're likely looking at those kinds of timeframes anyway for regulatory changes.
It's, my concern is similar to yours, are we, are CDFs so big that ours is too small to factor in, but it's, to me, it's something we have to look at. I had a conversation today with a firm, a green tech firm, and Greg's going to have a conversation with them next week, and the first thing they wanted to know was, can they pull green energy off the grid, or are they pulling strictly from Nova Scotia Powers grid? Because they can't reach their net zero target unless the grid that they're pulling from is net zero, and so the answer right now is no for us. But this would help us get ready that if, like you said, if the regulatory framework changes, then we can jump in, then the answer becomes yes, because this could, you know, this is very high-level discussions, but it'd be pretty cool for our town, but right now, it's going to probably be a quick no, so.
Yeah, and I think the other thing is, is that the objective of this, under the Energize Bridgewater, I guess, umbrella, is that it's looking at investment systems that will fund the program post 2026. So there is limited time to really shape that up, and so it's kind of like you have to invest a little to make, right, and kind of pre-plan for something that doesn't exist right now.
So you got a couple of options in there? Excuse me? Did I scare you? I don't know why it's so loud. Anyways, there's a few options in there. I would love you to put one of those on the floor.
I move that council for the town of Bridgewater direct staff to contact existing Nova Scotia CDFs to assess the opportunity for investment partnerships in Bridgewater related to renewable energy and energy programs.
Thank you. Do we have a seconder for that one? Councilor McDonald, further discussion on that? So my only question was staff capacity, so we're directing staff, staff has the capacity to go down this road?
So this would be Greg, our Economic Development Officer, yes, and it's been incorporated into his work.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. I don't think you're going anywhere, Leon, right? Because we have the PACE program recommendations and amendments?
That's correct, yes.
Ask you.
So this report was foreshadowed just a few months ago, when town council directed staff to enter into a multi-year contract with the Clean Foundation to deliver PACE administration services for the town. We indicated at the time that there was still program design work to be completed so that we would know exactly what the service would be that Clean Foundation should administer for our deep energy retrofit program, our home energy upgrades program. That design work has now been completed, and what you have before you is a recommendation to adjust the existing contract with Clean Foundation to enable these programmatic decisions. As part of that, the report contains a bit of an analysis of a lot of the key variables in the town's property-assessed clean energy financing program or PACE. Basically, you know, we looked at everything from program eligibility criteria, service fees, interest rates, and so on, did quite a bit of math on those aspects of the program and said, okay, if we're really going to commit to this for the next so many years, we should make sure that our rates are right. Now that program design has been completed, let's make sure we factor that all in. And at the end of the day, the conclusion is basically that many of the program terms, the financing terms, can safely stay where they are. So the continuation of the 1% financing rate, the interest rate for money lent under the program, the financing term, the savings to debt ratio, maximum eligible amounts, no changes recommended to any of those. But what we are advising is that town council direct staff to waive the $250 PACE administrative, PACE administration services fee for income-qualified participants in the Energize Bridgewater Home Upgrades program in order to, for the first two years of that pilot, in order to ensure that the program is as accessible as possible to lower and middle-income residents in Bridgewater, and furthermore, that those fees be recovered from the grant component of the FCM financing and funding. It's a part of the fund that we haven't provided a lot of information on up to now, and part of the reason is it's been a bit undefined. The original application was for 5% of the loan amount to be made available to the town as a grant, and the original idea was to use that grant for what we called a loan loss reserve fund. So should the town encounter any situations where it's unable to recover its financing from residents, So, should the town encounter any situations where it's unable to recover its financing from residents through, through PACE, uh, the loan loss reserve fund could step in and ensure that the town incurs no actual losses like to its tax base. That, uh, an analysis was done to look at, you know, uh, likely default rates and so on. There's a bit of discussion here. And at the end of the day, you know, staff is providing an option for council to use that grant component for, uh, for the transfer fees. Cause there's a, an MFC transfer fee, that's, that's part of this, as well as those waived $250 program admin fees for, um, for participants. I'm sure somewhere here I have the grand total of what that would come to. A combination of these two costs comes to an estimated value of $37,500, which represents about 14% of the total grant, assuming the full amount of financing is issued. Because we kind of earn the grant as we issue the financing, so it kind of accrues over time. And to put that in perspective, the total, yeah, the total grant amount is around $260,000 should we, uh, loan the full amount. There is a feeling among staff that, you know, the intent was kind of to keep it for a loan loss reserve. So, dipping into that does create more risk for the town. On the other hand, uh, you know, default rates have been historically very low for PACE programs in Nova Scotia. And so, this is, uh, it, it, it really is council's decision where to go with the risk. And perhaps the director of finance may, may want to discuss risk as part of this. But, um, you know, it's, it's something that we can do and it would be an easy source for those, those fee recoveries. So, a long-winded way of saying, those are the recommendations that do come out of this work. And then there's the attached agreement with Clean Foundation, including the changes. And I'd be happy to discuss those if you had specific questions.
Are there any questions on anything, Leon, just for just-
Leon, you may not be able to answer this, but through the South Shore Open Doors Association, do we track, um, issues that come in where the renter is under some duress with regard to home heat, apartment heating and that kind of thing? And do we then correlate that to, well, there's six of these issues in the same unit house, let's call it? And do we then approach perhaps the owner of that particular house? Because it was just noted in the qualifications and obviously someone who's in an apartment that may be experiencing some issues would not qualify for any of the, the PACE financing, right? Because they can't, yeah.
The, the, the PACE program isn't, is not for multi-unit buildings.
Right.
It's only for, uh, basically, uh, single unit dwellings in town.
Solely, so-
Solely.
Solely.
Based on rules that, that the Federation of Canadian Municipalities tied to the use of the PACE dollars that we are using.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just to clarify, if the FCM grant, if you want to repeat this, the FCM grant that is solely for a single unit dwelling, the PACE program, we could do with town?
Yes, so-
That's a decision.
Yes, so Jessica is explaining that the town can lend PACE dollars basically to-
Anyone.
Anyone we want.
Right.
But there is no source of PACE dollars right now that's been approved by council other than the F, the, the money tied to the FCM grant-
Okay.
And the, the, the percentage that we also need to put on the table to leverage their grant.
Understood.
And that has only been approved for single unit dwellings.
Okay, understood.
Yeah.
But, but you raise a, you raise a point that, that those arguably who are, are most vulnerable are living in a unit that cannot benefit.
Right.
While they can, we can, through the grant they can, but with our own money they can. But we really need a mechanism for that multi-unit. If it's a, you know, a three-level house that's got three apartments in it and they're just, the hot air is just exiting the building, right? Yeah, so I see what you're saying, absolutely. But, I mean, it's separate to this, but it's something we, we should, and South Shore Open Doors is really the, the great vehicle that can say, to your point, we've got six of these units, for example, that are in a highly energy inefficient building. We know who the landlord is, let's circle to that landlord and have a conversation about how he can do this in a cost-neutral way. Like, you're not out any money and you're gonna have happier tenants, so.
Yeah. So, uh, what I can add to that is that, uh, we are right now working with Efficiency Nova Scotia to put in place the multi-unit stream of the Energize Bridgewater Home Upgrades Program. So, Efficiency Nova Scotia in our two-year pilot for deep energy retrofits in Bridgewater have two streams. A, a stream with, for single-family homes that launched in December.
Right.
The multi-unit stream is going to be coming online very soon. Indications are that we should have the program open within weeks to potentially up to two months, two months from now. And we'll begin taking applications for multi-unit dwellings. We intend fully to work with the South Shore Open Doors Association to identify properties that are most in need of retrofits and so on. For clarity, we, the town can offer PACE financing to multi-units if we want. And if council approves a revenue stream, but we currently do not have that. That is something that staff are looking into to see if it would be beneficial in that situation. But we haven't completed our analysis yet.
Perfect.
Council Thorburn, did you have a question?
Yeah, do we know, Leon, roughly how many households we'd be dealing with in, in the next two years? Based on what we've already done? Is there a number that?
So, we have, uh, we have approximately $5 million in PACE financing to spend over about four years. Our application rates have shot through the roof in just the past few months. We have over 30 households in process right now. This exceeds any historical rates that we've had. It's a really different time for our programming. Yeah, we have about a million dollars already that we are looking to expend just, with, just this year in, 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 in home energy retrofits.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. And when the PACE services for the home upgrades program come online, that will create a new opportunity for Bridgewater residents as well. Because the numbers that I just gave you are only for our standalone financing program. People can finance retrofits to their home, you know, it's eventually coming out of their pocket, right? But with the home upgrades program, they are going to get significant, um, incentives and rebates and upfront dollars covered. And then if there's anything left that they'd like to finance, they can finance it through, through PACE. So, that's going to create new opportunities for people.
Wow.
The, the report, Clean Energy Financing, first quarterly report, has some great numbers in it. I encourage you to have a look at it if you haven't had the chance yet. We'll be providing quarterly updates on all of our, all of our PACE financing programs.
Council Thorburn wins the prize for the best news question of the night. That was great. Any other questions on that? I am looking for a motion. Is that for Council Thorburn?
I would move that council of Town of Bridgewater approve amendments to the property assessed Clean Energy Program Services Agreement between the Town of Bridgewater and Clean Foundation to enable the integration of PACE funding services to the Energize Bridgewater Home Upgrades Program. And direct staff to finalize and execute amendments to the agreement, subject to any resulting changes, being in the stance of accordance with draft presented in document 20-118HN. That council direct staff to waive that $250 PACE served administration fee for income-qualified Energize Bridgewater Home Upgrades participants in the first two years of HEMS pilot with Efficiency Nova Scotia. And that council direct staff to recover the waived fees, the municipal finance corporation transferred fees from the grant component of the FCM community efficient finance funding stream.
Thank you. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Frazier. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, thank you, Leon.
Thank you very much.
Down to 10.2, Family Services Association of Western Nova Scotia requests for tax exemption for 641 King Street.
So, this matter originates from the December 12th, 2022 council meeting in which council received a presentation from the Family Services Association of Western Nova Scotia, specifically a request for tax exemption for 641 King. So, just a little background, um, council did receive a similar request, um, January 11th, 2021, for two properties, 629 and 641 King Street. At that time, council denied the request for 641 King Street as it was not occupied and therefore did not qualify for an exemption enabled under chapter, or council's bylaw, chapter 184, tax exemption for nonprofit organizations, which states, um, the applicant needs to show that the assessed address and location is the site of the programs and/or services of the organization. So, while the future intent was to have the site occupied by the association to provide nonprofit housing, it was not occupied at the time. And for that reason, the application was denied. In December, council received a, a subsequent request to help facilitate a 12 to $15 million affordable housing development at 641 King. The request was to alleviate property taxes that accrue before and during nonprofit house, during the nonprofit planning, reduce development and building timeframes and associated fees, minimize parking requirements and fast-track approvals for the development. The applicant noted that in the presentation, the ability to forgive taxes and the exemption request would demonstrate the support they felt required for the CMHC co-invest funding application. And it was also noted that seed funding for the planning of, for this development could not be released unless the site did not have any outstanding taxes owing. So, presently, the building 641 remains unoccupied. So, the, the test of needing the tax exemption isn't met according to your bylaw, chapter 184. And there is, there was a development agreement approved, but that was a bit, bit of time ago. And since then, the file has been closed due to lack of, uh, commencing the development. Taxes owing on 641 as of January 3rd, 2023 were $53,961.43. Now, interest will obviously be applied for the month of January. So, that was as of January 3rd, not as of today. The taxes are three years in arrears. And per the town's tax sale policy, policy 33, the property will be put up for tax sale this coming spring if, if the taxes are not addressed. So, presently, um, the way this works is that we advise, we do several notifications to the property owner about a property owing taxes and one as of last year to say, if you don't pay your taxes this coming year, you're gonna be on, a threat of tax sale because it'll be three years in arrears. And, um, then notices are sent out even more recently to, to state that you need to come in and make, and make tax payment arrangements or address your taxes owing in some way so as to remove it off the tax sale list. So, a notice will be sent out first week of February, and that's the 14-day notice. And that goes to the property owner and advises the property owner that you have 14 days to come in, pay, or, or make arrangements. And if, and if you don't, then, um, if tax sale proceedings will commence. So, then we notify any lenders and post the property and notify the owner. And there's a 60-day countdown to tax sale essentially. And at that time, all taxes are due. There's no payment arrangements available once that date passes. And any legal charges that we have on the property for doing the title work or preparing for the tax sale get applied to that, that property as well. So, it's always a good thing to come in when you get that 14-day notice and, and, and try to, to make steps to take care of that. So, that's going out next week, or first this week, end of this week perhaps. And that'll start that 14-day clock. So, since December 12th, and understanding that tax sale, the tax sale is imminent, there was a subsequent request for council to defer the tax sale on this property and so, so as to enable a private, private sale as opposed to a tax sale. So, this report just deals with the tax payment and tax sale matters of the request. The other, the other matters about fast-tracking and parking requirements and waiving development fees would, could be addressed separately. So, the request for exemption of payment of taxes accrued as of today's date, or at this report, it was as of January 3rd, in the amount of $53,961.43. As noted, your, chapter 184, council's bylaw respecting tax exemption for nonprofit, requires that the building is the site for, in which the services of the association or programs are being provided. And at this point, it's a vacant building. It may be the intent at some point to have that used in it, but it doesn't have that used in it today. And it's unknown when that used would be there. So, it doesn't comply with chapter 184, which were the reasons provided back in January of 2021. Council could always consider giving a grant to assist the association in paying the property taxes. So, instead of calling it an exemption, you could look at it as a grant. There's, normally when council provides a grant of that size, council, um, would consider assurances that what they're providing the grant for will actually occur. So, if I'm providing a grant to build a playground and that, and I'm requesting a grant to build a playground and I never build that playground, typically you wouldn't give me the grant. You'd want assurances that, that that's what's happening. In this case, um, there's, it, it's to pay the taxes. And then the next steps are, have not yet been confirmed what those will be. There's intent, um, it's just a matter of, of not having those assurances. So, normally you put conditions on that before you would release it. Again, council can, if they so desire, not put conditions on the grant. The request for property tax exemption on a go-forward basis, assuming the $53,000 is taken care of or the taxes are paid, again, 641 doesn't, doesn't meet the requirements of chapter 184 of the bylaw. Because it is a vacant building, the services of the, or programs of the organization are not being provided within that building at this point in time. Again, there may be future intent, it just doesn't exist at the date that the application is made. In terms of the request to defer the tax sale of 641 King, so assuming that, um, the taxes remain outstanding after the 14-day notice and the property goes up for tax sale, the tax sale would, would be in accordance with the town's policy, policy 33, tax collection policy, which states that in accordance with the MGA, section 134, properties shall be put up for tax sale if taxes are in arrears for the preceding three fiscal years. So, this tax sale complies with your property and staff bring forward properties for tax sale that are three years in arrears. The municipal government act does enable council to defer a tax sale for up to two years. So, you can do that. You're able, you're able to consider the request. However, in doing so, you should ensure that the circumstances are unique to the property and not something that would be applicable to any property up for tax sale. The desire to defer so a private sale could occur is not unique to this property. Council denied a similar request a few years ago. And sold that property, that, put that property up for tax sale. So, these factors should be considered when you're considering a request. Cause you want to ensure that, um, it's unique, the circumstances are unique. Cause, um, the desire to sell it privately as opposed to publicly or at a tax sale would be something that would be common for anybody's property that was going up for tax sale. In terms of the CMHC co-invest application requirements, staff did review the submission requirements and in particular, what would be required for municipal support. So, the applicant, application does require confirmation of support from other levels of government. And the support can be in the form of investment, which, of, of resources, so financial, which would probably strengthen an application. But it could also be in the form of a letter. So, it, it doesn't come out and say it must be one or the other. It states there needs to be support and it does state it could be financial or a letter of support. They may have different weights or criteria that they place on the type of support that in this way it gets. So, um, as, as noted, the, the financial implications, if you provide a grant, well, it's obvious it's $53,961 that you'd be providing, it's unbudgeted. Deferring the tax sale to enable a private sale would not interfere with our ability to recover taxes owing, as normally tax adjustments are done. to recover taxes owing, as normally tax adjustments are done as part of a prop, as part of a property or tax adjustment when the property is sold. So we are a lien on that property, and that would be taken care of. This matter has been rever, reviewed with the municipal solicitor as well, and, and he can, can, I guess, confirmed that it does meet the requirements of, of our tax sale policy, be put up for tax sale, and the MGA does enable a deferral if so desired. So the options are there for council to consider, as I indicated, does not meet Chapter 184, so you would be violating your bylaw, which is not a recommended option. So you can deny the request for the tax exemptions, because it doesn't comply with your bylaw, and you can consider providing a grant, if so desired, and you know the taxes owing, it would be unbudgeted. In terms of the tax exemption on a, on go, on a go-forward basis, you would be required to deny, because it does not meet your bylaw. You can refer the, the applicant to our grants process, and then they can look at an annual grant, a request for an annual grant to council to help offset property taxes on an ongoing basis, or help, or offset some of your operating costs. And in terms of the deferral of the tax sale, you cannot defer and continue with the tax sale, assuming that after the 14 days it remain, it goes on that tax sale list, or you can direct that the tax sale be deferred for up to two years.
Any questions? All the CAO? All the information's before you, some prepared to make a motion? Council McDonald?
I would move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater not approve the request made by the Family Services Association of Western Nova Scotia for exemption from the payment of taxes accrued at 641 King Street in the amount of $53,961.43 as of January 3, 2023, as the request does not comply with Chapter 184, Tax Exemptions for Nonprofit Organizations, and that council not approve the request made by the families, sorry, Family Services Association of Western Nova Scotia for a full tax exemption from property taxes for 641 King Street, as the request does not comply with Chapter 184 of the tax exemptions for nonprofit organizations, and that council not defer the tax sale proceedings for 641 King Street as requested.
Dr. Secondary? Council Tanner? There a discussion? Hearing none? Okay, council call up?
I know there are representatives of Family Services Association here. Are they allowed an opportunity to address council, the associates?
So now, if delegations would have been, they were at the beginning of the council meeting? Now, council has specific questions that they can answer, then, then we could ask them to speak if you have a specific question. Otherwise, that is, that is where, delegations were at the beginning of it.
Mm-hmm. I guess I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
So there's $54,000 in taxes in arrears over three years, I'm just wondering what efforts have been made to pay those up to now?
I think staff can probably answer.
There have been, I don't think there have been any payments to the tax count, pardon me?
I checked just now, and I understood there still hasn't been any payments.
Yeah, over the last three years. It's been, it's been, just, it's just notes invoices with no payment, so. So my understanding was that there was some conversations held, but the proposal wasn't sufficient enough to address the, or provide comfort that, that there was an adequate payment plan in place to address taxes.
Did you have a follow-up question, Council Callwell?
Uh, no, I, maybe just a comment?
Yeah.
I, I, I probably will have to support this motion, which disappoints me. I had a lot of hope in this affordable housing project, but with all these taxes in arrears, I'm not sure I can commit $54,000 in taxpayer money for something that we have no assurance that we'll, will have the project come to fruition, and I'm just disappointed by that.
Yeah, there, Council Conklin?
Excuse me, I'm just curious, the level of communication between the property owner and the town, and mind you, I guess this has been going on for nearly three years, but are we talking just recently that we've had communication from the property owner, or has it been ongoing, or?
I don't know if you can speak to that, Ken?
We prepare tax bills twice a year, so we have the interim bill and the final tax bill, and anytime those have gone out where there's an existing balance owing, it is noted that it's past due overdue. Accounts receivable staff make effort to email and call clients when they have an overdue balance and they're headed for tax sale. Obviously, the fewer properties we have on tax sale, the easier it is for staff, so they're pretty diligent about trying to contact, and, you know, it's mostly met with no response. So the overdue notices, as well as emails, haven't been responded to.
Okay.
Okay, there was, I think, one recent discussion, but it wouldn't have, payment arrangements have to result in you being caught up on the tax bill by a certain point in time. If, if it's going to continue to accumulate to a higher balance, that wouldn't make a sufficient arrangement.
My understanding is, in, when the May bill, May 2022 went out, it would have noted that the property is at risk of tax sale. In August, a sec, when the second notice goes out, again, it notes that it is at risk of tax sale, and then in November, another notice went out saying it will be going in for tax sale, and that there's a 14-day period, notice period that the CAO talked about that would be coming in, in January, so, along with the other, the other attempts that are made.
So, like, none of the statements or invoices that went out was returned, were returned to sender?
No, we, any, any mail that comes back, returned, is actually noted right in our accounting package, so there are notes, there are no notes to that effect, and no payments.
So we're pretty confident that the property owner has been aware of the tax situation for the last couple of years anyway?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. 10.3, Health Services Foundation, South Shore Capital Campaign for the Brighter Days. We had a presentation, was it May that we had the presentation?
It was May.
Yeah, so we had already passed the budget for, for '22, '23, and we had the presentation that was made, and so we, I think at the time, we let them know that we, we probably have to deal with it, well, we said we'd deal with it in the future, but we really have to deal with it with the next budget, because it is a significant ask, and so the, the motion that is hopefully going to be put on the floor is to, you know, refer it to budget deliberations for, for discussion. Someone prepared this, Council, Deputy Mayor Fugier?
Yes, I move that council for the Town of Bridgewater refer the requests from the Health Services Foundation of the South Shore for a contribution to its Brighter, Brighter Days capital campaign to the 2023, '24 budget deliberations.
Thank you. Dr. Secondary, Council Conklin, I'll just say, you know, hats off to all the volunteers working on that campaign. See regular updates on, on the, the other foundations that are giving, and the, and the members of the public that are giving. When you look at the, I just looked at this awesome town prospectus that Pat and Greg sent me, talking about, it's $115 million that the, the hospital expansion renovation is, like, it's unbelievable, so. Anyway, so thank you for doing, move in secondary for that. Ready for the question?
Question.
All those in favor? As opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. We have no in-camera meeting, so we are at the end of this agenda. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Council Thorburn, seconded by Council Caldwell. We are adjourned.